Good morning. This hearing in the Subcommittee on Livestock, Rural Development, and Credit to coordinate future investments in broadband will come to order. Good morning and welcome to this hearing to review broadband deployment in rural America. In this modern age, it's surprising to know that there are some parts of the country where the live video feed from this hearing is not viewable by our rural constituents due to a lack of broadband access. In a time when commerce, leisure, and a transparent government rely on robust networks, we still find communities which are not connected through high-speed broadband. There are many communities still struggling to recover from a poor economy, to attract new businesses, and to connect new critical services not otherwise offered in remote areas. The key to unlocking these opportunities lies in greater access to services which are readily available in larger rural communities and urban areas. It's important to note that broadband can add tremendous educational opportunities to small communities. The ability to access online courses, study materials, research, and online lectures affords students some of the most efficient and cost-effective avenues for not only continuing their education but turning their curiosity into careers. And these opportunities are supported through several programs which provide resources to local facilities such as schools and libraries. However, none of these opportunities can exist if the community itself is not connected with a robust, high-speed network. Getting the most rural areas connected, much like the Rural Electrification Act accomplished for telephone service, remains a priority of this committee. When the Farm Bill was reauthorized this year, several provisions were included to continue making these critical investments in small towns and cities. I know in my district, I too often visit towns and communities who have been waiting patiently for years for full access to the information superhighway. I know a lot's been done to help bring access to rural communities, but it's my goal and goal of this committee to be able to do more than just tell people to wait a little longer. With us today, we have representatives from USDA and industry who are on the front lines of expanding broadband service. The loan and grant programs provided through USDA and reauthorized in the 2014 Farm Bill are specifically designed to target the most rural and unserved areas in the country. While the focus of this hearing is on the deployment of broadband through our U.S. programs, these programs are not operated in a vacuum. In the discussion today, I believe it will be helpful to review those changes in the recent Farm Bill in light of the FCC's changes to how rural telecom companies receive assistance. The efforts by the FCC to reform the USF have a direct impact on smaller rate-of-return carriers who both rely on USF support to provide service and our U.S. loans to expand their coverage areas. As the FCC transitions into providing telecommunications beyond traditional voice service, a careful coordination among the responsible agencies is critical to ensure funds are not wasted and the taxpayers receive the greatest return on these investments. Coordination across government programs is a major challenge in our nation, made up of the various states, counties, cities, and towns, each with their unique needs and approaches. The same approach to deploying service does not work well in all geographic areas. The committee maintains a technology-neutral approach to broadband, and today we look forward to learning more about the various approaches being taken to address the unique challenges in each area of rural America. Among the questions I believe our witnesses can help us answer include: How are the current programs facilitating the expansion of broadband networks? How are providers taking advantage of emerging technology? What are the roles of various types of providers in pushing farther into unserved areas? And how are the elements of USF reform and USDA loan programs coming together to ensure efficient use of resources? I look forward to the testimony from our witnesses today to help the committee understand the barriers to broadband deployment and how USDA is coordinating across related agencies to ensure the most effective deployment of broadband possible. Now, I'd like to recognize the gentleman from California, the ranking member Costa, for five minutes for an opening statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank members of the Subcommittee here. The title of this morning's hearing, that being the future investments in broadband and how we provide access to broadband throughout America, the breadth and width, especially to our rural areas that many of us represent, as we try to take advantage of the new technologies for all regions of America. And the panel, we look forward to your testimony this morning as well as to those here in the audience. Rural America comprises three-quarters of the nation's land area and is home to more than 50 million people. We don't think about it that way too often. We've got over almost 320 million people in the country. And obviously, the urban areas of America get the focus most of the time. But rural America, think about it, three-quarters of the land area and 50 million people. Since the Great Depression, the landscape of rural America has changed dramatically, and our nation's policies related to that part of the country have changed with it. Even as manufacturing and service sectors have replaced agricultural production in the dominant economic force in much of rural America, common needs for our rural communities remain, and therefore, again, the importance of this Subcommittee hearing today. The fact is, is that where you live, those 50 million people should not determine what kinds of services are available to you. The U.S. Department of Agriculture operates a number of programs that are designed to expand access, in this case, to broadband in rural areas. And those funding was contained in the Farm Bill that this committee made some changes to that we passed earlier this year, but was also part of a continuing effort in the Farm Bill that we did five years ago. And it was also part of an effort that we provided funding in the stimulus package back in 2009 that provided a segment of funding to provide connections in two different kinds of ways to telecommunications companies throughout the country. Whether it's in my home state of California or whether it's across the country, federal programs and private service providers have made great progress, I believe, in connecting rural America. I want to highlight a few of the California figures that illustrate why this issue of rural broadband is so important. And like many members, we all say, you know, all politics are local. So let me give you the perspective in terms of my own district. In 2008, a report by the California Broadband Task Force showed that California led the nation in broadband penetration, with 96 percent of Californians having access to the technology. According to the California Public Utilities Commissioner's most recent statistics revised in June of this year, 2014, the fixed broadband availability number now has risen to 97 percent plus. But this figure is also misleading. The same statistics show that over 250,000 rural Californians still lack access to broadband, even though the system has been significantly expanded. However, just because broadband is available, it doesn't mean that our constituents can use it, in this case, my constituents. For example, Merced County in my district has a little more than 75,000 households. Broadband's available to 99 percent of those households. But the California Public Utilities Commission says that in Merced County, only 51 percent adoption rate, 51 percent adoption rate, even though they have a 99 percent penetration. What that tells me is that despite the relative success in putting wires in the ground, the federal government, broadband providers, and public institutions still have a lot of work to do in bridging the divide between the haves and the have-nots when it comes to broadband, particularly in rural America. Why does this divide remain, and what are we doing to fix the problem? I look forward to the testimony of our witness. Despite the great work done in the 2014 Farm Bill on a bipartisan level, and I want to commend my colleagues again for that effort, what is disappointing is, is that I don't think here with this committee or with the Department of Agriculture, and this is just a gripe I've had for several years now, that we've addressed one of the biggest issues, and that is our rural development programs and the definition of what is rural. And I'll be on my soapbox for 30 seconds here. The fact is, is that my congressional district, like many of your congressional districts, are very productive in terms of their agricultural nature. But many of our communities are not only rural, but they are, in many instances, poor and disadvantaged. All too often, communities in my district across and across the country are prevented from taking advantage of these programs because we have a one-size-fits-all as it relates to the rural definitions. Despite the clear need, I think that we need to focus on the eligibility for rural development programs, whether it's in rural housing, health, or essential community facilities, largely because the criteria that we use to define rural communities, I think, the crosscut across the country is not evenly divided. I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chairman, to hear from the witnesses on both panels about what we can do to ensure that everyone in our country, no matter where they live, where they work, where they go to school, has access, what is so important in the 21st century, to broadband, and takes advantages of these services so that we can economically compete on a level playing field. So thank you very much for giving me the time for the opening statement. I look forward to the testimony and questions that we'll have an opportunity to ask.
I thank the gentleman for his opening comments. I would request that other members submit their opening statements for the record so the witnesses may begin their testimony and to ensure that there's ample time for questions. Without objection, so ordered. Our first panel is seated, and we are pleased to welcome the Administrator of Rural Utility Service in the United States Department of Agriculture here in Washington, Mr. John Palladino. And I want to thank you, Mr. Palladino, for taking the time to be here. I know that you are on the cusp of a new career. We will certainly miss your leadership. You've done a fantastic job in your five years of service, and we wish you all the best in your new challenge. Having said that, we welcome your comments, and you are recognized for five minutes, Mr. Palladino.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, ranking member Costa, and members of the Subcommittee. Thank you for the opportunity to testify this morning regarding future investments in broadband. As Administrator of the Rural Utility Service, I am proud to lead an amazing group of people who are honoring their predecessors in the Rural Electrification Administration by continuing to encourage growth and development in rural areas through investments in infrastructure. The history of rural electrification and rural broadband has many parallels. In the 1930s, it took a series of acts and appropriations to establish a public system for financing, designing, and planning rural electrification. Likewise, in the 21st century, it will take a sustained focus from Congress and the executive branch to ensure that rural residents have the same access to broadband as their urban and suburban counterparts. This is why the Rural Utility Services is relevant in the 21st century as the Rural Electrification Administration was in the last. Access to affordable broadband is important for economic development, education, healthcare, energy and the environment, government performance, civic engagement, and public safety. Schools can engage in distance learning. Medical providers can use remote medical diagnostics and monitoring. Farmers can efficiently manage their crops by using advances in agricultural technology. Yet, rural America faces challenges in accessing this critical service. Rural areas remain behind non-rural areas in broadband access. A 2012 study showed that 14 and 1/2 million rural Americans living in 6 and 1/2 million rural households, nearly one-fourth of the rural population, lack such access. Rural areas also remain behind non-rural areas in adopting available broadband. For example, Mississippi has a 26 percent gap between urban and rural broadband adoption. In addition, rural broadband deployment is costly, especially in remote frontier areas. It is estimated that the cost of reaching 250,000 housing units in those extremely rural areas will cost $13.4 billion, or an average of $53,600 per unit. We can't address this with loan dollars alone, which is why the rural gigabit pilot established by this Congress in the 2014 Farm Bill is so exciting. The Recovery Act also allowed the Rural Utility Service to explore and advance broadband in hard-to-reach areas. It's expanded the capacity of our rural communities beyond what they could do alone. Investment in rural broadband must focus on three things. Connectivity: More work needs to be done to connect both the un and underserved. Capacity: Investments must focus also on increasing the broadband speeds for those who do have access to entry-level service. And creativity: We must look at leveraging existing successes in rural areas by supporting rural telecommunications providers and partnering with our rural electric cooperatives in the areas where the large price cap carriers are not investing in broadband. Since 2009, the Rural Utility Service has invested over $5.5 billion in broadband that will connect over 1.4 million rural subscribers to new or improved service. The Rural Utility Service is focused on increasing capacity by ensuring that the Recovery Act-funded projects through the Broadband Initiative program are completed on time and on budget. To date, almost 200,000 rural subscribers are receiving this service, with over 59,000 miles of fiber and over 1,200 wireless access points currently deployed. USDA and the Rural Utility Service have been strong advocates for rural consumers with the Federal Communications Commission. In the last two years, Secretary Vilsack and I have met with former chairman Julius Janikowski and current chairman Tom Wheeler, each time stressing the importance of the Rural Utility Service and the Federal Communications Commission working together. And we provided recommendations on how to improve the Federal Communications Commission's implementation of much-needed reforms through the Connect America Fund. The Rural Utility Service telecommunications programs with a combined loan portfolio of over $4.5 billion help deliver affordable and reliable advanced telecommunications services to rural communities, services that are comparable to those in urban and suburban America. We have a strong record of supporting infrastructure upgrades, and together, we can offer even greater returns for our nation, including healthier, more educated communities, and expanded markets for businesses. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate your continued interest and that of the committee in broadband programs. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
I thank the gentleman for your opening comments. I would also like to make a correction. Obviously, I mispronounced your name. My apologies, Mr. Palladino. I said Mr. Palladino, so it's probably not the first time that's ever happened.
It's not the first time my grandfather did say, "Never let them get your name wrong." But out of due respect, I did not correct you.
I appreciate that. My apologies. Thank you for your opening comments. I recognize myself for five minutes. In the report dated May 2014, the GAO cited a high number of failed projects in detailing in the details of that report, they seem to refer interchangeably to recisions and defaults. Do you agree that the two outcomes should be in the same category, and can you explain how those should be viewed?
Thank you for that question. I don't agree that they should be considered in the same category. A rescission is markedly different than a default. A rescission is a project where we've obligated funds to the project, and for some reason, the project applicant couldn't meet the conditions to have the loan closed. And over a certain amount of time, the agency will make a decision, or maybe even at the request of the applicant, to rescind the funds. The funds come back to the government, either go back to Treasury or turned around for future loans. So that's a rescission. A default is where a project's underway, advances have been made by the agency, and for some reason, the loan applicant cannot make a repayment, and they're talking about monetary defaults in this situation, and those are markedly different. When I read the GAO report, you know, I took a little thinking about recisions. I thought, that's good government. That's us doing our job at the Rural Utility Service to make sure that an applicant comes up with the needed working capital, that comes up with the needed conditions to make sure that that loan can close, and if that can't happen, we will rescind the money and turn that money back around. On defaults, you know, this is a new program. It's only been in place a little over 10 years, thanks to Congress in the 2002 Farm Bill, amended in the 2008, and again in the 2014. And as I noted in my opening remarks, the history of rural electrification, history of rural broadband, has a lot of starts and stops. have implemented those in our regulations, and I think, in some ways, we've been ahead of the GAO in looking at our program.
In that same report, concerns were raised that USDA may not have a process in place to ensure that approved loans were not rescinded because of a lack of working capital on hand, which often resulted in wasted effort by RUS and tied-up funds which could have otherwise been used on projects elsewhere. Can you explain why this would be the case and what USDA is doing to address that concern now?
Yes, thank you. The 2008 Farm Bill had a 10% equity requirement, and that's a requirement that really ensures that there's working capital available. It provided the secretary discretion to have additional requirements if, in the secretary's or in the agency's discretion, we felt that more cash was needed, to ensure that during the time of construction, enough working capital is available when there are negative cash flows, to make sure that construction can go to completion and can get through the first few years of service. Out of the 2008 Farm Bill, when we published the interim rule in 2011 and then the final rule in 2013, as an agency, we added an additional cash requirement from those lessons learned from the early days of the broadband program. That additional requirement, cash requirement, focuses on startup operations, on operations that have had negative cash flows for the two years prior to submission of a loan application. We feel that that's a strong signal that we're looking at cash flow at the working capital issue. That is the number-one issue when it comes to either a project being rescinded or even a default.
Okay. The FCC has pursued several major changes to the Universal Service Fund, and I've mentioned this in my opening statement. How's that impacted investments through RUS programs? Can you share your insights on how those changes might influence the approach taken by RUS borrowers when considering plans for expansion of services?
Whenever I'm asked about USF, I'd just like to note that, on one hand, it's good policy to shift from a telephone-based support mechanism to a broadband-based support mechanism. When the FCC issued their order, their transformation order in 2011, what we saw is demand for RUS investments almost come to a halt, where it really is chilled investment in rural areas, because the order, while well-meaning, had a lot of undetermined business, undecided business in there, where an investor, a small company in rural areas, a cooperative-owned company in rural areas, they just didn't want to make future investments, not knowing what the regulatory policy was going to be. So far, the FCC has implemented some of the reforms that they said were to be determined in that 2011 order, but more remains, and even some of the reforms that have been issued have caused some detrimental effects to rural areas.
Thank you. I've run out of time. I would like to recognize Ranking Member, gentleman from California, Mr. Costa, for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Palladino, what tools would you describe, and I know in your testimony you listed some of them, but that you think are available, that we should be focused on with regards to the Rural Utility Services, to get the rural areas connected, as I described, some of those across the country, some of those areas that I represent as an example?
Well, thank you for that question. We have the available tools that we have in the loan programs. We have the traditional infrastructure loan program available to communication providers who are focusing on communities 5,000 or less. The broadband loan program focused on--
So, that would include, as I discussed with you earlier, I don't know if there's such a definition of mom-and-pop telephone companies anymore, but we do have these smaller -- that really are a reflection of some that have been owned in a family for 50 or 100 years or longer, that have 20,000 connections or whatever the number may be. This would provide support for them, because I've seen that example successfully utilized.
Yeah, two of the providers in your district are owned by a parent company, but those two providers are those rural local exchange carriers who've taken advantage of the infrastructure loan program for the last 60 years, since Congress established it in 1949. It's been a great tool. It's been a great resource for our rural telecommunications providers out there. The broadband loan program tried to expand the reach, so we could go beyond the rural local exchange carriers into that price-cap territory where the big providers just weren't providing broadband service. We also have the Community Connect Grant Program that really focuses on communities that are wholly unserved, provides grant funds so we can establish a broadband system, a network, in that community, also together with the community center, so people can learn to use the broadband once it's available. We have the Distance Learning Telemedicine Program in Arkansas. I visited Baptist Health in Little Rock, where there's a flora on the hospital that doctors are available 24/7, that's providing medical services to rural clinics across the state. Those are the tools we have available. We also have to provide technical assistance. Just in the past few months, we've done a number of broadband workshops across the country, where we focus on areas that are unserved or underserved, receiving broadband--
To that point, and I used that in my statement, what is the technical assistance that you provide for lower-income communities, so that we can improve the adoption rates? As the example I used in Rusett County, but I know those adoption rates are a problem throughout the country.
Well, part of my perspective at the Rural Utility Service has been to look what we did back in the REA early days, where we not only provided the access to funding to build the electric systems, but we had roadshows essentially that went out and taught people how to use the electricity once they had it. We had people who walked you through all the different appliances that would be available, and the broadband workshops are focused on an economic development perspective, from the kind of theme of, "You have broadband, now what?" To make sure that if a community that doesn't have broadband receives loan funds or a grant to build a broadband system, that they have a plan to use that broadband, so more and more people will adopt it.
It's our understanding that no broadband loans will be awarded until the new regulations implementing the latest Farm Bill developed, are developed. When do you expect these new regulations to be released, so that the broadband loans can be expanded?
The 2014 Farm Bill was passed in February, signed into law in February. We've been hard at work with the regulations, and we expect that they'll be published in calendar year 2015.
And then, the loan program can proceed following that?
Yes, Congressman, as soon as it--
So, we're to tell our constituents that until 2015, they're not going to be able -- you're not going to be able to proceed with any of the loan programs?
We won't be able to process the loans, but I think there's a lot of front-end work that folks can take a look at the statute already and see what the requirements are, see what the service area requirements are in the statute that's out there, and we're happy to talk to them in general about broadband, but we won't be--
Let me get to one other technical question here, because it deals with the Recovery Act funding. Under the Broadband Initiative Program, projects must be completed by June 2015. All the funding will expire by 2015. Given that 85% of the projects are not yet completed, do you expect that any projects still not completed by June 2015? How many would you estimate, and what steps can the Rural Utility Service provide to ensure that these projects will be completed after that date?
Sure, thank you for that question. We are focused on all the projects that are within construction. We have 255 active projects right now.
255?
75% of the funds have been dispersed already. We work with the -- each awardee almost on a weekly basis via telephone or site visits. We're constantly engaged with each awardee. We expect all the projects will be completed as proposed. Throughout the four or five years of the Recovery Act, we've seen projects that fall in and out of being at risk of not being completion, and one issue or another may arise. We work with the awardee to try to resolve that issue, and we, so far, have been successful with that, and we plan to continue those steps going through the next year.
Go ahead.
June of 2015 is our contractual requirement that they be substantially complete, and by the end of September, by statute, the funds will be no longer available.
Thank you. My time's expired.
I thank the Ranking Member, recognize the gentleman from New York, Mr. Gibson, for five minutes.
Well, I thank the chairman and the ranking member for pulling this together. And, Mr. Palladino, I just want to say how much we appreciate your service. Our district has really benefited from your leadership. We've had conference calls together. We've worked a number of issues, and just greatly appreciate you and your team. We're going to wish you the best going forward, and I know that the continued outstanding service will be with your successor. So, just a couple of things. First of all, just a testimonial, how important the telemedicine aspect is to rural areas. I'll tell you that one of the pilot hospitals, Margaretville, has two doctors. They happen to be married couple, and, you know, what a huge difference the telemedicine pilot project made. You know, they were actually able to deliver their first baby since, I think, the 1970s with this. It's just a very small, very small hospital in rural America. And then also, after Hurricanes Irene and Lee, they saved two lives. A tree came down on the chest, and they were able to consult with the broadband capacity with experts from fairly nearby, but about an hour's drive hospitals, and made a huge difference, saved lives. And finally, on this score, this couple was able to take their first vacation in like four years, because they were still accessible, and they actually consulted on a medical procedure from Bali. So, you know, here we were able to keep two -- a couple in this hospital, which allows us to, you know, keep this going. So, I just want to underscore how important these programs that you're leading, and how important they are to rural America. You know, in your comments, you talked about, which I really want to affiliate and associate myself with, you certainly didn't show any prejudice to any particular approach, whether it be big company or small company, but you did note that a lot of the small companies are very aggressive on this score, and I would concur. I mean, these family-owned businesses, they live in our communities. They see firsthand every day the impact on education, on healthcare delivery, on job creation, and quality of life, that access to high-speed broadband can make a difference, and conversely, when you don't have it, what the impacts are. And so, you know, as I look at this issue, you know, again, I'm happy to see anyone advance rural broadband from any perspective, and we've worked together on the committee here. We played a role in the recent Farm Bill and some of the reforms to bring transparency and effectiveness. But, you know, looking at the FCC's program and your program, I'm interested in ways that we can continue to build out capacity and empower our smaller companies. My read of the initial rules, or I should say, the rules coming out on the FCC is I think my smaller companies and the rural co-ops are going to get a better access to some of the Connect America Funds. That's my read of it. I'm encouraged. Be curious to know if that's your read. And then going forward, I'm interested in also, might there be ways so we can improve some of the programs under the RUS, so we can get these smaller companies and, you know, the rural co-ops to find this profitable? One of the ideas that I had, well, actually, it was, I think, Senator Joe Brand, and I concur, is that we could tweak the program a little bit, provide for, if you bring 10% non-federal money, then you would get a 10% grant, and in the balance, the 80% would be in the low-interest loan. I'm curious to know your feedback on that. Sorry, I went on so long.
Well, thank you for your compliments, Congressman, and to get right to your questions, the FCC recently announced the Rural Broadband Experiments is Phase II of the Connect America funding, and they are trying to make, for price-cap areas, they've established a budget of $100 million to make that money available for a 10-year recurring basis to a wide variety of providers, including electric cooperatives, to compete for that money, to say, "We can put the best project out there in those areas." And I agree with you that the electric co-ops were started by community members, the telephone co-ops were, even the for-profit telecommunications companies are locally owned, and I really believe that local people in rural areas are the best resource for advancing that. And some of the tweaks we can think about is how we can leverage our rural electric providers out there, the rural electric cooperatives. You know, they have a much larger footprint than some of our smaller rural telecommunications companies, and how can we build a partnership between those rural telecommunications and rural electric cooperatives? Together with the FCC, combine the support mechanisms from the FCC with the low-cost loans. I'm interested in that proposal that you talk about, about bringing in private investment. The administration recently announced the Rural Opportunity Investment Fund. There's going to be a source of private money there, and I think with a solution like that, we can leverage more and more resources to advance the cause of broadband.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and good luck to you going forward, too. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
You bet. The gentleman's time has expired. Now, recognize the gentleman from Minnesota for five minutes, Mr. Nolan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to join my colleagues in commending the Administrator for the terrific job that you're doing, and I want to commend my chairman and Ranking Member for conducting this hearing. As one who lives in the remote areas of northern Minnesota, where the little pine in a farm, where the little pine and the big pine river come together, I was an early beneficiary of the advantages of broadband, which greatly enabled me to expand and conduct my international business as an exporter of American goods and services. And I am of the view that expansion of broadband to rural areas may be singularly the most important thing that we can do, to expand business opportunities in rural areas for small business. And it's no secret that most new jobs and economic development in this country occur from the small-business sector. In essence, what broadband does for rural areas, it puts them in the same position that a big multinational corporation would be in, sitting in Manhattan, or Minneapolis, or Los Angeles, when it comes to their communications with the rest of the nation, the rest of the world, and making readily available to them all the knowledge, information, and services that are out there. So, I just want to commend you for what you're doing, and the chairman for conducting this important hearing, and lend my support and my encouragement to all that you're doing. Keep up the good work and keep pushing, and you've got a lot of people here who believe in what you're doing and want to help in any way and every way we can to help facilitate that. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Congressman. The Rural Utility Service is really a gem in the federal government. It's the only federal agency that directly finances infrastructure. We hear a lot of talk about building infrastructure banks, green banks, all kinds of banks, but we have one that Congress established 80 years ago. It's the Rural Utility Service, and we've been hard at work providing infrastructure investments from our water and waste systems to our electric systems. We're trying to build a new, energy-efficient rural America and, of course, advance the cause of broadband. So, thank you for your remarks.
The gentleman yields back. With that, I just, before we conclude this panel, Mr. Palladino, I wanted to expand on a point that the Ranking Member brought up. Current projects underway, funding expires June 2015. Just to clarify, if a project that's currently underway is not completed by 2015, what would then be the disposition of those projects?
If a project ends up at the, you know, end of September, September 30 of 2015, without being complete, they will no longer have funds available from RUS. So, whatever funds remain undrawn won't be available anymore. They could still complete their project with some other financing, but those Recovery Act-provided dollars will revert back to the Treasury.
Okay, thank you. And again, we do want to thank you for taking time out to come.
Just a follow-up, if the gentleman would yield. Now, that seems rather abrupt. I guess I'm trying to understand, let's say, one of these rural telephone companies has got a loan or a grant, they can be either. And let's just pick a number for discussion purposes. It's a million-dollar grant for improvement for access, and they've let the contracts they've -- to do the improvements, and they've spent half of it, or, you know, 60% of it, but they're not complete. And June 2010, 2015 runs around, and all of a sudden, they're left, even though they've let the contracts for the other $400,000, because it's not completed?
Our focus has been to ensure that doesn't happen. We've been, over the last few years, we asked in early September, or January 2012, all the awardees, "Where are you at with your construction? Do you need to amend your timeline, so we can understand where you're at?" We've had numerous webinars. We're about to send out another letter reminding awardees that, you know, you're about, you're out from completion. We need to know where you're at. We stay at the local level through our general field representatives, very engaged with the borrowers through site visits, phone calls. We require numerous reports--
Let me make a suggestion. I think that's all good, but I think the members of this subcommittee, and maybe it's something staff could work with the members of the full committee, but it'd be nice if we had a listing of, I don't know if the number's 255, or whatever you stated earlier, of these projects that are currently ongoing, so that we-- of these projects that are currently ongoing, so that we could know those that are in our respective congressional districts, and we could help complement your efforts to say, look, you're on a, a timeline here and you need to do everything you can to expedite it so that you're able to complete the project. Because I think that would, certainly we'd like to know. I don't think any of us would like to find a situation where next March, we have our local telephone company calling us and saying, you know, we're two-thirds done with our project, but we're not going to complete it until August, and they're telling us now we're going to run out of their money. What can you do to help us?
And further, if the gentleman would yield, clarification between grants and loans? If you, if we could have that as well on those 255 projects that you mentioned, because I think that clarification will be helpful as well. And if you could make a distinction, I understand a grant obviously different than a loan, but are we going to see that funding unavailable for loans that have already been made as well? Or can they reapply at some point if in fact they didn't meet that timeline?
Right. I thank you for your offer, and we, you know, really appreciate the assistance, and we'll be happy to work with the staff on providing that information. Just a couple quick clarifications. On those 255 active projects, 44 of those have been fully complete. We have over about 140 of them that are partially complete, which means they're providing broadband and all are part of their service territories, but there's just some remaining punch list items to, to be complete. Again, 75% of the funds have been dispersed. Over 90% of the proposed miles of fiber and proposed wireless access points have been deployed. Where many of these projects are is at the last phases of the project, where they're doing the cutovers, connecting subscribers to those services. But we really appreciate the offer of support and we're happy to work with your staff.
All right. Thank you. Gentleman Yields, with that, Mr. Padalino, again, we want to dismiss you with our thanks for your service and with our best wishes for your, your future. And we appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will now move into our second panel. And as our panel takes position, I will go ahead and introduce those individuals comprising panel two. Mr. Lang Zimmerman is Vice President of Yelkot Communications in Mountain Home, Arkansas. He is testifying on behalf of the National Telecommunications Cooperative Association. Mr. David Cohen, Vice President of Policy, the US Telecom, based here in Washington, DC. Mr. Robert L. Hance, President and CEO, Midwest Energy Cooperative, Casopolis, Michigan, testifying on behalf of the National Rural Electric Cooperative Association. And Mr. Christopher Gutman McCabe, Executive Vice President, CTIA, the Wireless Association here in Washington, DC. Welcome. Gentlemen, we appreciate you being here. And with that, I will introduce our first panelist, Mr. Lang Zimmerman, who, as I said, is Vice President of Yelkot Communications in Mountain Home, Arkansas, which is, I'm proud to say, in my congressional district. Mr. Zimmerman, and to all our panelists, I'll just remind you, you see the lights in front of you. Green means you're good to go. And it's just like when you're driving, if you see a yellow light, go like heck because it's fixing to stop. And when you see the red light, that means stop. And we will take your expanded comments and your, your written comments, but for the sake of time, we would just ask that you limit your, your oral presentation to five minutes. And with that, I'm pleased to recognize Mr. Lang Zimmerman for five minutes.
Chairman Crawford, Ranking Member Costa, and members of the subcommittee, thank you for the invitation to participate in today's discussion. My name is Lang Zimmerman, and for the past 29 years, I have served as Vice President of Yelkot Telephone Company headquartered in Mountain Home, Arkansas. And my remarks today are on behalf of Yelkot, as well as NTCA, the Rural Broadband Association. And there are several hundred small community-based members that provide a variety of communications services throughout the rural far reaches of the nation. We believe our industry is uniquely qualified to participate in today's discussion because we are small businesses on the front lines, deploying high-speed, sustainable broadband to rural America. Yelkot is a carrier of last resort and has always operated under the premise that if someone wants service in our service area, then we do whatever it takes to serve them. Because of this commitment, and with the aid of key rural development programs and universal service support, rural Arkansans throughout Yelkot's service area, and indeed throughout the markets of all the NTCA members, have access to reasonably comparable services at reasonably comparable rates as mandated by current and longstanding law. Small rural telecom members of NTCA provide access to voice, video, wireless, and broadband internet services, as well as enhanced emergency preparedness. Most importantly, they connect rural Americans to the entire world. In rural America, that translates into economic development that produces jobs. Broadband has become essential to delivering healthcare, educational opportunities, and securing the public safety. And much of the business world is already demanding higher broadband speeds to help it interact with and sell to customers near and far. Broadband and other service providers, services provided by the rural telecom industry serve as an incubator for small business ideas in rural America to be implemented and to flourish. Yelkot's top priority has always been to provide every one of our consumers with the very best communications and customer service possible, at affordable rates that stimulate adoption. The entrepreneurial spirit of Yelkot is representative of our approximately 1,000 small rural counterparts in the industry, who together serve about 5% of the US population across approximately 40% of the nation's geographic landmass. USDA's Rural Utility Service, RUS, plays a crucial role in rural broadband deployment through its telecom loan portfolio that finances network upgrades and deployment in rural areas. RUS lending and USF support are inextricably linked as 99.2% of RUS telecom infrastructure borrowers like Yelkot receive high-cost USF support. The presence of high-cost recovery is crucial to the ability of RUS borrowers to repay our, our US telecom and broadband loans. RUS programs have helped rural providers deploy modern networks in many rural areas where the market would otherwise not support the investment. Reliable access to capital helps rural carriers meet the broadband needs of consumers at affordable rates. Yelkot has firsthand experience working with RUS, and I can testify to the benefit of having an experienced lender available to finance projects at a fair rate. Yelkot and our rural consumers continue to benefit from the RUS telecommunications infrastructure loan program, which has financed upgrades of our network to the fiber era. In the past few years, with the help of RUS, Yelkot companies have added over 130 miles of buried fiber cable, replaced 10 central offices with four soft switches, and added or replaced over 50 remotes. Unfortunately, applications for RUS telecom loans are down dramatically at a time when customers everywhere are clamoring for faster broadband. Why would an experienced lender such as RUS want for loan applications when demand for networks is high? Look no further than the state of rural telecom regulation, which includes an opaque and unpredictable USF capping mechanism recently tossed out after years of lost investment. A requirement for customers to purchase landline voice service in order for their line to receive USF support, and plans to increase rural telephone rates to $20.46 in Arkansas, while the monthly rate in Washington, DC will remain at $14.10. We appreciate the support of those members of Congress who have contacted the FCC regarding the state of rural telecom regulation. In particular, I would like to thank you, Chairman Crawford, for signing a letter to the FCC regarding the outdated requirement for customers to purchase landline voice service in order for their line to receive USF support. The benefits that some rural communities are already experiencing will only be possible for all if robust broadband is available and affordable. Rural telecom providers and lenders such as RUS must have regulatory certainty before they can make greater investments in the networks of the future. The key to regulatory certainty is a USF remade for the broadband era, including a broadband-oriented support mechanism for small carriers that gives rural consumers options in selecting services that best fit their needs. Thank you again for the opportunity to testify, and I look forward to answering any questions you may have.
Outstanding. Right before the red light, that was perfect. Thank you, Mr. Zimmerman. Pleased to recognize now Mr. David Cohen, Vice President of Policy, US Telecom, Washington, DC. Mr. Cohen, you're recognized for five minutes.
Chairman Crawford, Ranking Member Costa, Subcommittee members, thank you for the opportunity to present the progress being made in bringing broadband to rural America. It is timely and appropriate to review how the Rural Utility Service and the Federal Communications Commission can coordinate to extend and improve broadband availability. I am David Cohen, and I serve as Vice President of Policy at US Telecom. Our association represents innovative broadband companies, including some of the largest companies in the US economy, as well as small cooperatives and family-owned providers. We share the determination to bring broadband services to all Americans. Our members have spent enormous sums and made great progress in bringing broadband to rural areas. 78% of Americans living in rural areas have access to wired broadband. However, more can and should be done. The FCC's Universal Service Fund, USF, and the telecom programs of RUS are complementary elements in building out rural broadband. As the FCC continues modernizing USF, coordination with RUS is necessary. The FCC should remain cognizant that RUS has a large portfolio of loans to borrowers that derive a significant portion of their revenues from USF. USF must also ensure a predictable level of future support so that carriers can confidently plan, borrow, and invest in facilities. In 2011, the FCC adopted the landmark USF order, which chained USF from supporting voice service to supporting broadband. The FCC created a two-phase Connect America Fund, CAF, for price-cap companies serving rural America, including AT&amp;T, CenturyLink, Frontier, Windstream, and others, but did not replace the legacy USF mechanism for smaller rate-of-return companies. The FCC noted the amounts of traditional USF for price-cap carriers had not provided sufficient funding to, to deliver broadband. As a result, 83% of the 18 million Americans lacking adequate broadband lived in price-cap areas. CAF Phases One and Two were designed for those areas that had historically been underfunded by USF. To spur immediate build-out, the FCC provided interim support of over $500 million to price-cap carriers willing to take on broadband service obligations, to which companies added hundreds of millions of dollars of their own. Consequently, almost a million more rural Americans will be connected to broadband. CAF II, the permanent mechanism for price-cap areas, is expected to begin in 2015. It will offer price-cap companies a fixed amount of money to meet vigorous broadband service obligations. The FCC provided price-cap carriers an initial opportunity to access CAF II funds. The FCC has wisely rejected calls by some to jump in front of the line and overturn that FCC decision to make the most efficient and cost-effective use of the limited funds to build out rural broadband. The FCC anticipates asking price-cap carriers whether to accept the obligations and funding by the end of this year. Where price-cap companies don't elect funding, the FCC will conduct an auction open to all those willing and able to undertake the broadband obligations. It's important to distinguish between CAF Phase Two and the FCC's Rural Broadband Experiments Program. The FCC allocated $100 million for experiments to explore how to structure the auction and to gauge interest in deploying new networks. The program drew 1,000 expressions of interest. Of the 690 that US Telecom sampled, 78% asked for more than the support available. So while many would-be providers may make facile representations about being able to provide broadband service in rural areas, even under the very informal expressions of interest process, almost four out of five proposed to do so above the FCC's reserve prices. The FCC has made less progress in establishing a USF program for rate-of-return carriers. The program doesn't support rural lines where the customer gets broadband from the rural carrier but voice from someone else. To plan, borrow, and invest in broadband, small companies need a USF that supports broadband-only lines and has some certainty as to future revenues. The FCC hasn't adopted a plan that allows small companies in our US to determine which future loans and investments are feasible. The rural telecom industry has proposed such a plan, which the FCC should seriously consider. In conclusion, the targeted assistance offered by our US coordinated with FCC's USF program remain essential to a healthy rural economy. Thank you for your commitment, which we share, to accelerate rural development by making broadband available to rural America.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Next, I'm pleased to recognize Mr. Robert L. Hance, President and CEO of Midwest Energy Cooperative, Casopolis, Michigan, testifying on behalf of the National Rural Electric Cooperative Association. Mr. Hance, you're recognized for five minutes.
Chairman Crawford, Ranking Member Costa, members of the Subcommittee. Good morning. My name is Bob Hance. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before this distinguished Subcommittee to coordinate future investments in rural broadband. I am the President and CEO of Midwest Energy Cooperative, an electric cooperative serving more than 35,000 members in southern Michigan, northern Indiana, and Ohio. I am also testifying on behalf of the National Rural Electric Cooperative Association. NRECA is the national service organization for more than 900 not-for-profit rural electric utilities that provide energy to over 42 million people in 47 states. Electric cooperatives own and maintain 2.5 million miles of the nation's electric distribution lines, covering 75% of the US landmass. In the 1930s, rural electric cooperatives like Midwest Energy answered the call of rural America to bring electricity to the countryside. Electricity was a vital and transformative product that larger investor-owned utilities were unwilling and unable to provide to rural America. Today, Midwest Energy and other rural electric cooperatives are again answering the call to develop next, the next transformative utility, robust broadband. I'm proud to discuss with you Midwest Energy Rural Broadband Initiative, offered through our telecommunications subsidiary, Midwest Connections. According to a recent NTIA study, only 23% of rural residents have wireline broadband at speed of 50 megabits per second compared to 98% of urban residents. The national broadband map and anecdotal evidence from our members suggests that in Midwest service area, 50 megabits per second is even less available. Significant gaps in the availability of broadband in rural America strand our members on the wrong side of the digital divide. In response to member demand, Midwest began investigating the opportunity to provide this valuable service. It became clear that although billions have been spent in rural telecommunications, little infrastructure exists in rural areas to provide broadband. Midwest explored satellite and broadband over powerline solutions, but they all failed to provide reliable and scalable service. Ultimately, Midwest designed a 243-mile fiber ring through our utility substations and facilities for the immediate purpose of fostering a smarter grid for our members. Leveraging this key asset provides us a unique opportunity to deploy high-speed next-generation broadband solutions where one currently does not exist. Midwest and other rural electric cooperatives need your support to compete for the billions of dollars available to provide broadband in high-cost areas. Midwest and more than 100 other electric cooperatives filed expressions of interest in response to a request by the Federal Communications Commission. The overwhelming response prompted the FCC to move forward with conducting rural broadband experiments. Any company interested in providing robust broadband may bid for financial support. The Commission is actively considering whether or not to similarly extend the opportunity to compete to areas covered by unsuccessful experiment applications. Rural electric cooperatives like Midwest are championing an inclusive competitive process. The FCC will consider the comments of industry, consumers, and legislators in conjunction with its experience in the rural broadband experience, experiments, to allow competition in rural areas for building broadband networks. The FCC is poised to award almost $20 billion of Connect America funding to support high-cost areas. This is a once-in-a-generation opportunity to deploy broadband in rural communities who deserve to be in full participants in our modern economy. Midwest and NRECA appreciate the efforts of the FCC to create an inclusive environment where all eligible providers have an opportunity to compete for support in offering creative solutions and to close the gap between broadband available in urban and rural areas. In conclusion, cooperatives like Midwest Energy are well-suited to build and maintain broadband networks. We aren't asking for preferential treatment, just an opportunity to compete. We do not seek to exclude anyone from the conversation, but we do believe that a narrow view of the solution may condemn our communities to the wrong side of the digital divide. I want to repeat this last point. Midwest advocates for an inclusive opening of opportunity to provide broadband to service rural counties. The status quo approach is exclusive and limits opportunity to those who have always received high-cost support. Given the current lack of broadband in rural areas, Midwest strongly believes that if the Commission and Congress do not open the playing field to competition, rural America may never have the chance to experience the educational opportunities, employment prospects, advanced healthcare that broadband delivers to those lucky enough to live in low-cost, high-population centers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify before this distinguished Subcommittee. I welcome any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hance. And we move now to our last. And we move now to our last panelist, Mr. Christopher Gutman McCabe, Executive Vice President, CTIA, the Wireless Association here in Washington. Mr. Gutman McCabe, you are recognized for five minutes.
Thank you, and good morning, Chairman Crawford, Ranking Member Costa, and Congressman Thompson. I appreciate the opportunity to participate in today's hearing. My name is Christopher Gutman McCabe, and I serve as Executive Vice President at CTIA, the Wireless Association. Today, Americans wireless users sit at the epicenter of the wireless broadband revolution. Driven by vibrant competition, massive investment, and successful light-touch regulation, the U.S. wireless industry has deployed fourth-generation wireless technology at a rapid pace and now offers this world-class service to ninety-five percent of the American people. In fact, despite being home to just five percent of the world's wireless subscribers, the U.S. claims forty-five percent of the world's 4G users. As a result of the deployment of 4G technologies, a growing number of Americans have chosen to abandon traditional telephone service and go wireless-only. In fact, during the second six months of 2013, two in every five U.S. households did not have a landline telephone, but did have at least one wireless telephone. And nowhere, Mr. Chairman, is this more true than in Arkansas, where almost half of the adult population live in wireless-only households. Similarly, an estimated 45 million Americans use their wireless device as their primary on-ramp to the Internet. As wireless networks have become more ubiquitous, reliable, and robust, they have become building blocks upon which other segments of the economy rely to innovate and drive more efficient outcomes in their respective fields. This is certainly true in agriculture. Whether through the use of GPS-assisted technology or terrestrial wireless sensor technology, wireless is helping to provide farmers with real-time feedback on a number of different crop and site variables. This data helps to drive increased efficiency and improve yields. Onboard telematics powered by wireless guide farm equipment to reduce time in the field and cut fuel costs while simultaneously reducing maintenance costs and time lost to repairs. Just as many of us rely on mobile apps to check a sports score or a bank balance, agriculture professionals are using apps to perform a variety of tasks, including to access farm and field information, check market prices, track cattle, and even help consumers locate locally grown farm products. Commercial wireless networks stand behind each of these activities. Wireless is an increasingly important part of rural communities, and not only for those involved in agriculture. Rural consumers and businesses of all sizes benefit from access to competitive services and world-class devices as CTI's members invest to bring cutting-edge wireless service to rural America. While we're excited about helping U.S. agriculture and rural America thrive, we're just scratching the surface of what's possible. But building on these advances requires the right policies here in Washington. America's farmers may not know that they care about the intricacies of spectrum allocation, the challenges of tower siting, or the impact of FCC regulation, but they do. This is true because the ability to deliver the sorts of services on which the farming and agriculture community is relying depends on the wireless industry having access to spectrum and the ability to build networks needed to put it to use without the burdens of unnecessary regulation. Spectrum is the key input into the wireless business. For us, it is the oxygen that fuels everything else. For this reason, ensuring a sufficient predictable supply of spectrum for commercial use is at the top of CTI's agenda. Thanks to Congress's work in the 2012 Middle Class Tax Relief and Job Creation Act, there are two upcoming auctions that will bring additional spectrum to market for CTI's members. Congress must encourage the FCC to do everything necessary to ensure that these critical auctions are successful and on schedule. Once spectrum has been auctioned, it must be put to work. That means that networks must be deployed. To facilitate this, the FCC must complete work on its wireless infrastructure proceeding, which is flowing from the 2012 law that authorized the auctions. Finally, policymakers must continue to support a light-touch regulatory regime for wireless. Wireless is different than the other communications and broadband technologies. Wireless has benefited from a comparative lack of regulation over the last 20 years, and the results validate the efficacy of this approach. Our world-leading environment is no accident. Regulators thus should not try to prejudge how the wireless industry will evolve or impose upon it rules designated for wireline networks developed in a monopoly environment. Similarly, policymakers should not bias the FCC's universal service programs or the Rural Utility Service loan programs in favor of any particular technology. Consumer preference, not government fiat, should guide network deployment decisions. Thank you again for the opportunity to participate in today's hearing. I look forward to working with the Subcommittee to advance the deployment of wireless service across all of America. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gutman McCabe. And we'll start our round of questioning. First, I recognize myself for five minutes. Let me start with Mr. Zimmerman. In your view, are the various agencies such as USDA and FCC coordinating sufficiently in their efforts in such a way that might result in a comprehensive and effective plan for the deployment of broadband in rural America?
I missed the first part of your question. What was that again?
Do you believe that the agencies such as USDA and FCC are coordinating sufficiently in their efforts?
Okay. I can't say how the agencies work back and forth. The one thing I do know is that the RUS is making things that will help us as far as loan programs and to make availability of more broadband. But the regulation that we have on the FCC side makes it very hard for us to plan and take on these loans because we're afraid about being able to repay them. The rate floor in particular, jumping to $20.46, my local rates are $14, that'd be almost a 50% rate increase that they wanted us to do within a three-month... They gave us three months to get it done. That's just unreasonable for people to have to get done. It makes it hard for us to keep people on the network if they keep jacking up the rate that the people have to pay to be on the network. And it's for a voice service that a lot of them don't want. It makes the broadband piece higher and higher and unaffordable in rural areas where they're trying to get it more expanded. So that's sort of the side we've been having trouble with.
Okay. And I've heard this before. So basically, there's kind of a... It's sort of a template for... That doesn't allow the consumer to make the choice between broadband and voice, that they just kind of are packaged up together. Is that correct?
That's right. They make the universal service support to the company based on the voice side only, not the broadband. And people have gone... The voice has gone to wireless if it's available. And it's not available in all areas, as we know. But if it is, that's where the voice traffic has migrated to. To tie the support to these rural areas to get broadband to the voice is just an antiquated part of the system, and it's a detriment because people will not pay the added expense of having a telephone line. They don't want it, and in most cases, they don't need it.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Cohen, your testimony highlighted the differences in large and small telecom providers and mentioned several of the FCC reforms, which impact them separately. You feel that the FCC is sufficiently taking into account the impact on smaller providers?
The FCC is taking into account the impact on small providers, but unfortunately, their timing is behind that of the impact on large providers. So that there is a universal service mechanism designed and implemented for the large providers. As I mentioned in my testimony at the beginning of 2015, they will be able to elect whether to receive CAF II funding. After that, the remaining CAF II funding in the areas not elected will be open to all comers. On the small-company side, the small companies, as Mr. Zimmerman mentioned, are still dealing with the universal service mechanism that was made and designed for the voice era, and now we're in the broadband era. And so the FCC needs to both address the issue of broadband-only lines, as Mr. Zimmerman pointed out, and ensure that they receive support, but also modernize the universal service program for small companies so that they can have a predictable source of revenue from universal service, which will enable them to plan, borrow from our U.S. and other lenders, and invest in broadband to extend and improve the availability of that service in rural America.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Mr. Hance, your cooperative and others like it are, you know, pretty much a tip of the spear in broadband. And I think that's kind of how you want to lead the charge. How do you choose which areas make the most sense for you to serve?
The best way to answer that question is just I think each of the co-ops are taking their own projects under their own advisement. The way most of us are approaching it, not speaking for everyone, is trying to concentrate on those areas where we have the highest concentration of meters. It's hard to say in the landscape that we serve. We, at our system, serve about nine meters per mile line. In our most dense areas, it might be up towards 15. So we concentrate on those areas where we have the best opportunity to get to the most dense first, but with the idea that we would reach out to all of our members eventually.
Thank you. Mr. Gutman McCabe, you mentioned a shift away from landline subscriptions to wireless solutions. Can you talk about... A little bit more about how the wireless and backhaul networks are connected and what it takes to expand both wireline and wireless coverage?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. And I think at the core of my testimony is the notion that the country's evolving pretty significantly as we speak. More and more people are moving to wireless-only. More and more people are using wireless as their access point to the Internet. We're hearing more stories about M-Health, mobile health, and mobile education. And part of our concern is that we're not entirely sure that the government programs are aware or at least take into consideration this evolution. At the same time that the FCC is reforming its USF fund, its universal service fund, it's significantly reducing the amount of money that goes to mobile broadband. And for us, yes, there certainly is an integration between the use of mobile broadband and backhaul, but we believe that whether it's the RUS programs or the Connect America Fund Phase II, that there needs to be some technology neutrality that allows, you know, consumers in essence to make the choice. If there's enough need or desire in an unserved market for wireless service, then the providers in those areas should be able to get access to these funds, particularly as we see this evolution. I'm fearful that we're going to continue to miss what is becoming, you know, just such a tremendous tidal wave of change in the United States towards mobile use. The mobile broadband doubled in size for the fourth year in a row, mobile broadband uses, the amount of megabytes of usage. And it's sort of outpacing all of the predictions of five years ago of where it was going to be. And I am fearful that some of the programs that we're talking about today, whether it's the RUS loan program or the Connect America Fund Phase II, or even the mobility fund, where the Commission's contemplating taking a mobility fund that went from north of a billion down to 500 million, they're contemplating reducing that even further. And I'm sure you have areas, particularly road miles in your districts that aren't served, that could use some... The carriers in those areas could use some support. Our carriers are working hard to get there, large and small, but I think the... Having a technology-neutral program, set of programs, would really help to facilitate both, again, the intersection of broadband backhaul from the wired constituents as well as wireless broadband service from my constituents.
Thank you. And I recognize the Ranking Member for five minutes.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Gutman McCabe, I listened carefully to your final comments there. Are you saying that you think that the Connect America Fund creates an unlevel playing field as it relates to...
Certainly, as it's... At least as it's being considered, it is... There are some concerns we have with some of the... Either the latency requirements or the requirements on the size or the amount of capacity that a company that receives the funds has to deliver that don't recognize the technology differences with a mobile network.
And you can substantiate that?
Well, I mean, certainly, we have put on the record some of those concerns, and again, we're putting them on again on the record very soon.
Mr. Cohen, can you clarify what you think? You believe that the Connect America Fund should play in providing subsidies for broadband as we try to expand deployment throughout rural America?
Yes. The Connect America Fund is designed to provide support for areas that make no economic sense without such support. Congress has indicated to the FCC that they wanted the budget for that fund limited. The FCC limited that budget to $4.5 billion per year. The FCC is very carefully allocating those funds. They're ensuring that they go to provide the type of services that...
And so your assessment, how do you think that's all working?
Well, right now, we're still in the implementation stage of the portion of the fund for price cap areas, and that is moving along. And we will see over the next 12 months how CAF II is implemented, which will provide that election for the price cap carriers, and then the subsequent auction. The areas served by the small companies, the rate of return carriers, unfortunately, the Connect America Fund has not really been designed for them for broadband.
And so then you think that's a gap?
Absolutely.
Go ahead.
The FCC needs to promptly move along and support broadband-only lines and develop a predictable broadband-oriented program for small companies.
And you talked a lot about in your testimony the price cap carriers...
Yes.
And how it's across the country impacting on a state-by-state basis. So if a state service area goes to an auction process, bids can pretty much go to any geographical area?
Yes. The price cap carrier in a particular state, presumably by the end of the year, which the FCC has indicated, that's their schedule.
Are you concerned that there may be cherry-picking as a result of that?
Well, no. The price cap companies will be offered an election to elect the state as a whole, their entire service area in a state to receive support. If they decide not to elect that funding, that area is open up to an auction, and various providers of any sort can bid to provide service in particular areas in the state.
Do you think the FCC should reconsider how Phase II should work and whether or not those who are participating in the right of first refusal, or whether or not that should be skipped altogether?
The FCC made the considered decision to accelerate broadband to rural consumers who have waited, in many instances, a very long time for it by providing for the right of first refusal, which allows the price cap carriers that have facilities in these rural areas to add on to those facilities and improve those facilities to be able to provide broadband. But they also provided a competitive opportunity for others in areas where the price cap companies do not elect to accept the CAF II money and the obligations to anybody else to apply in the auction, to bid in the auction.
The FCC has dragged its feet in this area? I hear it's taken over three years.
Certainly, the process has taken longer than anybody, including the FCC, has anticipated. But it appears that we are now reaching the conclusion of the process, and money should be flowing next year.
So are you hopeful?
I'm very hopeful that the Commission will continue their prompt implementation of the CAF II program, and rural consumers will soon be receiving the benefits of broadband service.
The ultimate go, universal broadband?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I thank the gentleman. I recognize the gentleman from Pennsylvania for five minutes. Mr. Thompson, you're recognized.
Chairman, thank you so much. Thanks for putting this Subcommittee hearing together. Incredibly important issue. Recently, I had the opportunity to be with a group, a coalition of folks, who every two years publish the Why Rural Matters study. And, you know, and just a great study. And it was interesting to see the fact that we're actually growing the number of youth in rural America with this last biannual report. They've been doing it for some time now, about 13 years or more. But this past report that covers the past two years shows rural youth increasing proportionally, you know, higher than in urban America. And between that, the economic impact, I mean, the importance of this hearing is so significant, obviously, providing access to broadband. So I think all four of the witnesses, thank you, gentlemen, for your respective areas of leadership and expertise. I want to start with Mr. Zimmerman. In your testimony, you at one point discussed how rural telecom has been at the forefront of innovation, specifically in terms of converting to digital systems and how the wireless... And now to wireless networks. With technology constantly evolving so quickly, what kinds of impacts, either challenges or benefits, has this continued technological... or benefits, has this continued technological innovation had on rural access, development, and infrastructure? And also, any thoughts on what we may see for future innovations?
Yes, sir. One of the big changes is to be able to get the increasing levels of broadband out to the rural areas. We've been able to get DSL speeds, which is basically 1.5 meg to 98% of our territory. That is increasingly being seen as not enough or insufficient. And one of the things that we struggle with is to be able to upgrade these networks. And one of the bottlenecks had been, we have, we are geographically isolated, and the way to get to the backbone of the Internet has basically been through larger carriers such as AT&amp;T or Century to get traffic out of those rural areas to the backbone. And a lot of times, we had trouble getting the capacity we needed, so we have gone out on our own with the help of RUS to build some fiber networks of our own so we can connect to the backbone ourselves. So that's been one of the best things that we've been able to get done, and one of the things we continue to work on to expand the capacity because the needs keep going up.
Any, I know it's a crystal ball, but innovation continues, obviously, in particular this area. I opened this question up to the panel. Any thoughts of what innovations we may see next coming out that will help to increase, you know, cost-effective access?
That works great.
Well, I guess I'll dive first, Congressman. You know, we're seeing deployment of LTE, which is our fourth-generation technology, happening at a rate that is, that far surpasses the other evolution or introductions of our technologies. And what that's doing is opening up the doors to a range of services that I don't think any of us could contemplate. I wrote a Law Review article on telemedicine 18 years ago. I wouldn't have guessed that most of the evolution in telemedicine would be in mobile health, and that, you know, some of the technologies to deal with long-term health problems would be happening in areas. One of our rural providers, one of our regional providers serves the Wisconsin and some of the rural areas in there, and they are one of the leaders on putting together mobile health solutions for diabetics. So we're seeing these sort of capabilities that are flowing from next-generation, you know, technologies, next-generation networks, that we couldn't have thought, whether it's, I did a search on apps for agriculture, and I just saw the top 14 apps of 2014, and it's pretty staggering what those apps can do. And so whether it's across agriculture, or education, or mobile health, or banking, I mean, you sort of can go on and on, the things that are happening in the mobile broadband space are really life-altering and pretty staggering considering where we were five years ago.
And just follow up to one of your testimony, you had stated in your testimony, consumer preference, not government fiat, should guide the network deployment decisions. You know, what actions do you think, just, you know, we're just about out of time, but what actions do you think should be taken to ensure that we allow the markets to work their will?
Well, so I think if we look at USF as an example, setting a framework or parameters that don't, out-of-the-gate foreclose mobile access would be key. So if you choose latency or sort of the total capability in terms of the amount of megabits that can be delivered in a month, and those are not capable on wireless networks, you foreclosed wireless providers, large, small, urban, rural, from getting access, you know, to those funds. So I think that's a simple one, recognizing that wireless is different, that there are significant benefits to the ability to have mobility. There are benefits to having, you know, greater capacity and greater throughput of a landline service as well, but there are real benefits to mobility, and consumers are making that choice all the time.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Gentlemen's time has expired. I thank the gentleman, and I recognize the gentlelady from New Mexico, Ms. Lujan Grisham, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, everyone. Mr. Zimmerman, as a representative from a very rural state, I certainly understand the challenges in providing services to rural areas. And I experienced these firsthand. My notes say Secretary of Health, but I served in state government for 17 years and was responsible for aging and disability services, and then also all of the public health services. And part of the problem in getting out our direct services and providing access was certainly making sure that we had broadband and Internet access, and it's something that I think rural and frontier states still really struggle with today. And I'm just going to give you some facts. We know that 77% of rural counties face a serious shortage of health professionals and an even greater shortage of medical specialists. This means that 51 million Americans that live in rural America must travel greater distances, I'm struggling, face longer waits, and usually spend more money than people in urban areas for the same care. So in New Mexico, to combat this trend, a gentleman by the name of Dr. Sanjeev Aurora, a professor at the University of New Mexico, created a project, a program called ECO, and it stands for the Extension for Community Health Outcomes. Now, what it does is it provides specialty care to rural residents by connecting their primary care docs with specialists. In this way, folks with very specific and significant disease issues can get access using telehealth or telemedicine. Now, it was created in 2003. Since then, it's expanded to more than 30 universities across the country, and it currently provides assistance to thousands of clinics all over the world, but it's continuing to provide directly, its impact is focused in New Mexico, this model. Problem is, it's still, after 2003, there are several areas that we cannot reach. We don't have the broadband needed to attach a project or a program like ECO to, say, Indian country or the rural's most remotest communities. Higher broadband speeds are needed for telemedicine, as you know, because, two things. Only 51% of the population has access to broadband download speeds of at least 25 megabits, as compared to 94% of the urban population. But frankly, more importantly, in telemedicine, if you don't have broadband, you cannot do most of the diagnostics that are really enhanced and needed in order to have that relationship between your medical practitioners, between a rural and frontier area and your urban area where you're connecting these health professionals for the benefit of the rural patient. How can policymakers better support small rural providers in not only deploying broadband in rural communities, but also making sure that that service can support projects like the one I've described to you, New Mexico ECO, and telemedicine in a more, in a broader fashion?
Well, one of the oddities of this whole process was that many of the rate of return carriers like myself were able to get a high level of coverage at a basic speed, like I mentioned earlier before, of 1.5. And then when the 2011 order came out, the talk was that the urban areas should have 100 meg up and 100 down, and that the rural areas should only be able to do four down and one up. And that's, that was just a terrible thing to tell people in the rural areas, that you just should be happy with what you've got now, but the urban areas are going to get the big, fast speeds. And that has been a big issue for us all along, that the small companies have done a good job of getting some basic coverage out there, which we continue to beef up, and that it seems like the regulation going on now is more towards the price cap carriers to let them get some areas that are not covered caught up with. But we don't think areas like rural New Mexico, where my aunt lives in Ruidoso, or Arkansas, where I live, should be left out.
Ruidoso's a big city, sir. Big, huge city.
Big city?
Yes, sir.
Well, my other aunt lives in Artesia, so I think that's a little bit smaller.
I don't know. Until you've been to Werfino or Pyetown, I'm not sure, you're still talking about big cities.
Okay. Okay. Well, I thought I had a shot there.
So, and I appreciate that, but what I'm struggling, Mr. Chairman, and with the panel, I appreciate everyone's presence today, is that what we're currently using isn't enough to incentivize and develop broadband high-speed access in the places that we really need it. And without it, not only are we not investing, I think appropriately, in the ag community, but broader in things like, and we're spending those and paying for those in USDA appropriations and grants, that telemedicine can't be connected where we want it to, because it can only do the counseling services, Mr. Chairman. It can't do the diagnostic aspects unless we find a way to have broad-based coverage. I really challenge the, I challenge us to find those appropriate incentives and balances to make this really accessible across the country.
I thank the gentlelady. And gentlelady yields, I'm pleased to recognize the gentleman from Alabama, Mr. Rogers, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Zimmerman, you indicated in your earlier testimony that you're currently using 10 gigabyte network. In the recent farm bill, a provision was included to create a pilot program to accomplish that same goal. Do you still think we need that pilot program to go forward?
Absolutely.
Also, under the recovery, tell me why.
Oh, I think that's where the backbone needs to be. We have got big areas of Arkansas that need to be connected, that have been connected through a BTOP grant to connect the four-year and two-year colleges and the health centers, and that's where the 10 gigabit network is, to connect the big data centers. As far as getting out into rural mom-and-pop homes, we don't need 10 gigabits out there whatsoever. But to be able to get these isolated parts of Arkansas, or perhaps Alabama, to get them the network capacity to feed the entire neighborhood or the entire district, you need to have a big pipe going out of there that needs to be able to have that capacity.
I like that, perhaps Alabama part.
Perhaps. Not necessarily.
I think it should be Alabama, perhaps Arkansas.
Okay.
In the Recovery Act, USDA obligated $3.4 billion at a rate of over $17,000 per line. Now, can you share your experiences in expanding networks and how that basic average compares to the costs you face connecting these networks?
What was the top number you had, seven?
$3.4 billion.
No, I mean per line.
$17,000 per line.
Okay. That must be in rural Alaska somewhere, because that's really, really high. Obviously, the cost to maintain what's called the local loop from our office to somewhere way out in the county is going to be high. In Arkansas, probably in the $80 to $150 per loop cost. And again, we have rates of about $14 that people would never pay that kind of rate to pay $80 to $130. So it's always been that there's been support to make the rural customers have comparable services at comparable rates, and that's been in the law since the Communications Act of 1934, so it's very important.
Well, talking about making these connections, geographic challenges such as hard soil and rough terrain can inhibit the build-out of these networks. How do you overcome those in your experience?
Rockhammers.
What's that?
Rockhammers. If we, if, when we put in fiber, we don't want to put it up in the air because we have tornadoes, we have ice storms, and utilities up in the air are very, very vulnerable to weather. So we have gone in and buried these fibers. In North Arkansas, the rock is about six inches to 18 inches below the surface, and you have to rock plow that thing in, and it's a very expensive project to do.
How is it to maintain, given that difficulty?
Luckily, being buried and put in conduit, it's pretty protected there, and we have networks that we can trace where the problem is if something gets cut. We had a funny thing happen in Mountain View, Arkansas. A farmer had a dog die, took his backhoe out to bury the dog, cut her fiber, and it, and we couldn't find where it was. And you have those kind of strange things happen to buried fiber, but it's not as vulnerable as something up in the air.
He really wanted to bury that dog if he had to use a rock hammer.
That's right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
I thank the gentleman. I appreciate the panel for being here today. We're going to close and wrap up. Before we do, I want to thank Ms. Lujan Grisham. She is filling in for the ranking member who has departed to participate in another committee hearing. And just in closing, before we dismiss, I just, I want to, again, thank you, and it seemed like the recurring theme in your oral testimony was the USF issue and bringing that, sort of modernizing that, bringing it into modern age. Is that safe to say? I think all four of you referred to that in some detail in each of your opening comments, and so we'll work hard on that and among the other issues that you've detailed. We appreciate you being here. I would also like to say that under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material and supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any questions posed by a member. This Subcommittee on Livestock, Rural Development, and Credit hearing is now adjourned.